Good morning. We'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, if we may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. This meeting will be conducted in compliance with Nebraska's open meeting laws, the copy of which is on the back wall. Mr. Cook, would you please call the roll? Oh, and we have an external defibrillator. If anybody has a heart attack, be sure to let us know. And please turn all the cell phones off, or put them to silence, please.
Good morning. Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Mr. Chair. Here. Thank you. We start with the Board of Equalization. First item for consideration is the minutes from last week's meeting, and calling for a meeting for March 10th.
So move for approval.
Second.
Questions or comments to A and B? Then could we please vote?
Commissioner Boyle's vote won't appear due to technical difficulties, but he does vote yes, as do the rest of commissioners. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to address the Board of Equalization during citizen comments? If not, we will move down to resolutions D through F. Oh, you do? This is for Board of Equalization?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Paul Bellinger, 10215 West Center Road, Omaha, Nebraska.
Good morning.
Thank you for the circle of greatness, Mr. President. It's nice to have a place where we can come and talk to our elected leaders. And I just have something real—two real quick things I need to overhead. You had asked earlier about the citizen comments, and I wasn't able to come down and talk to anybody. So rather than have the citizen comments be all like this, maybe we could just have citizen comments and/or candor do a citizen. So if I come here and I want to talk about a leaking natural gas line down the street from my house that needs to be sleeved, this should be the place where my elected officials would be able to talk to me about that, I feel like. And that would probably take care of that problem. So this is my second—my second subject today. This was brought to my attention in the city council meeting last week. This is the city of Omaha here. I know you can't see it very well, but maybe that does a little bit better for you. This is the city of Omaha here. This is Douglas County here, kind of outlined in yellow. You can kind of—yeah, if you could just—maybe let me move this a little bit. You can see, here's the borders of Douglas County here in yellow, and then the big yellow mass being the center of Omaha, the city. According to the city—Omaha City Council last week, this is where our helicopter force is, is way up here in Washington County. This is where Unable One and Unable Two and Able Three and backup 3.5 live at. Now, my question is, is in all the comments and the confusion about the Juvenile Justice Center downtown, can we just throw another $5 million at that and have the heliport put on top of that, and let's just call it the, you know, the James T. Gleason heliport, sitting on top of the Patricia Lambert Center for Juvenile Justice? You know, two great Americans, two great people, two great just judges here in our county that have done a lot for me, they've done a lot for everybody else. I just wonder, Mr. President, has anybody even looked at maybe putting $10 million into that building and bringing this program, $30-$40 million program a year, here for a force multiplier for the citizens of Omaha, here in downtown Omaha, instead of way up here in Appalera Municipal? You know? So I had my insurance—I was right in the middle of my insurance, 30-day window where I was going to go out and get some new house homeowners insurance. The Monday before that city council meeting, I had a price on my home to get that insurance for the calendar year going forward, paid up forward. That city council meeting, they decided to buy this helicopter, and at the end of the week, I got the notice, $405 more, a dollar a day per citizen to have Unable One, Unable Two, Unable Three—or Able Three and Able 3.5 here in Douglas County. But that doesn't only just count to people of Douglas County, that's now the people of Washington County because Able 3.5 and Able Three have to fly from Washington County down here. I mean, why don't we just spend $10 million more dollars and put it on top of the Juvenile Justice Center? That way, we can transport everybody direct in. It's just an idea. I'm here just in case you need any other ideas, suggestions. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr.—Miss past president. We're glad that you're here today. We've seen you in your absence, and we hope things are a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Interesting thought. Anybody else wishing to address this board under citizen comments?
Just want to mention that I have written out a proposal to allow citizens to speak about certain subjects that I would second after doing your work, and I've been hoping times since we want to accept them.
All these public comments of all sorts.
Fine, very good.
Not bad.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can get my speaker out.
Okay.
Did you do this, Larry? Did you do this?
I wish I could take credit for my—
[laughing]
Would entertain a motion to approve resolutions D through F?
So move.
And adjourn? We have no need for exec session for this, okay? Questions or comments to any of those either? Then could we please vote?
Oh, yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We will now convene as the Board of Commissioners. Would you please call the roll, Mr. Cook?
Commissioner Borgeson?
Here.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Craft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. Item 1A and B, the minutes from last week's meeting, and B, claims for payment through Tuesday, March 3rd. Questions or comments to either of these? Then could we please vote?
Give us one moment, please. Well, we're going to have to do this old school.
Okay.
Who's—I apologize. Can you repeat the motion and second to me, Commissioner Roger? Commissioner Rogers made the motion, and—okay. Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Cav—
My thing is first to the Board of Equalization, but we're on the—
Yeah, we're—I don't know—if—anyway, we're having it—we're having trouble getting it to move on from the Board of Equalization.
Which items are the—
A and B, the minutes and claims.
One A and B.
A and B.
One A and B. Yes.
So Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Craft?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Next for the consideration of the board is the consent agenda. We have items A through O. Questions or comments to any of these? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
I'd just like to make a comment on item I, which is the resolution of Senator Smith for his public service. I think the district's members here—
Yeah, it is.
And I just wanted to commend him for volunteering for his—
Public service. I know that he is very well qualified and has applied in the past, and he's exactly the kind of young and enthusiastic talent that we need on our boards and commissions. So thank you, Mr. Smith, for coming forward, and on behalf of Douglas County, we wish you great success in your public service here. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Other questions or comments? And indeed, welcome Dakota. I understand we have another vacancy coming up on the planning commission for somebody from outside the city of Omaha, be filling in short order. Okay, let's vote on the consent agenda, please.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 3A, resolution honoring Tom O'Connor for a distinguished 45-year career in media relations, and recognizing him as an outstanding citizen of Douglas County for his many contributions to our community. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Welcome, Mr. O'Connor.
Me too.
I see that you have your lovely family there, and they're welcome to come down if they want to join you. They're going to be noted in this resolution anyhow. We'd love to have them down.
One of them is on crutches, but he's—
I understand. I talked to the young man beforehand.
Yeah.
Sports injury?
[laughing]
Damascus bone.
Very good. The Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska. Whereas Mr. Tom O'Connor came to Omaha from Des Moines, Iowa, to attend Creighton University in 1968, and whereas Mr. O'Connor had a remarkable career as a journalism student and reporter for the Creitonian, and even was the subject of a high-profile Creitonian news coverage item, and whereas Mr. O'Connor received a bachelor's degree in journalism from Creighton University in 1972, and whereas Mr. O'Connor had a distinguished 45-year career in media relations with 13 years at Mutual of Omaha and over 30 years at the University of Nebraska Medical Center, and whereas Mr. O'Connor has been recognized as a leader in the Omaha media profession as president of the Omaha Press Club, and was honored as such by the Omaha Press Club with their Face on the Bar Room Floor Award in 2016, and whereas Mr. O'Connor and his wife of 47 years, Karen, have a growing family with son Andy and daughter-in-law Jen, daughter Kelly, and son-in-law JP, and their five grandchildren, Carson, Kennedy, Johnny, Tessa, and Finn. And whereas Mr. O'Connor is retiring from—or has now—from UNMC as Associate Director of Media Relations to pursue a career on the senior golf tour, write his memoirs, and enjoy more quality time as a husband, father, grandfather, and someday great-grandfather of the growing O'Connor clan of Omaha, now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby recognizes Tom O'Connor as an outstanding citizen of our city, county, and state, and express our appreciation for his many contributions to our community. We wish him a long, well-deserved, happy, and healthy retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, unaccustomed as you are to public speaking, I wondered if you had a—
It's an honor, honestly. And Jim lost a bet, and in case you were wondering, that's how I got this thing, but anyway. Hey, it's—you guys do great work. I appreciate everything that goes on in Douglas County, and I will remain an active member of Douglas County in my retirement, I promise. So, thank you. Thanks so much, James, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom.
Jim and I go back 50 years, so—
Thank you all—for all you've done for our community, and thank you for this lovely family. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Mr. Paul Schneider, your brother-in-law, and Paul, thanks for coming down.
I remembered your birthday, so—
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We have a copy of this and a photographer here, if you'd like to come down.
Although I think we may have another commissioner or two that would like to say something first.
Oh, yeah, right.
Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I congratulate you as well, Tom. We've had a long relationship, not only at the University Hospital, but also the Press Club and so forth. And one thing that wasn't disclosed, Jim, in the proclamation, was that Mr. O'Connor was a juror once in a case that I tried as a trial lawyer.
Wow, you've got a good memory, Mike.
Prior life, and—
How'd you make out on that?
I—you know, I should say I remember, but I don't. I just have one question, though. How did you vote? No, I just—
[laughing]
No, I—Tom is really one of those standouts, and the University of Nebraska system is so fortunate to have had him, and I just can't imagine it—I know it's functioning fine now, it's really in the highlight and the headlines and so forth, but it is a very impressive operation, and you helped make it that.
I appreciate that.
The way you communicated to the community and to all of us. So, on a serious note, thanks a lot. You did a great job.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
My timing is pretty good with that coronavirus coming down and shaking up.
Boy, no kidding.
Yes, indeed, indeed.
Well, I don't know if you want to notice, but on Saturday night, he also received the Lifetime Achievement Award from the Ancient Order of Hibernians. Dan Esch was the MC that night, did a great job. So, taking a victory lap, well deserved.
Thank you. We're ready for it to end.
Sure, although we probably ought to vote first, make sure we pass it.
The voting machine's actually working now, so—
Oh, okay. Well, not for me. I vote yes. Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you all. We got to get a picture.
Is it historic or is it ancient?
No, this is a town.
Okay, I'm going to take—
Right.
How do I get it when it goes down to sleep, though?
[inaudible]
Okay, I'll take it. I'll take it with you.
You guys are cool.
Okay, so I'm going to do a couple, because I'm testing this new flash, okay? So we're going to do one with the flash, one without. So it's like here. Okay, ready, one, two, three. One, two, three, and I'll do another one without. Here we go, one, two, three. Awesome.
Sorry, one more, so I guess.
Thank you, right there.
Do you have any of Sherry and Meade?
I didn't.
Person who keeps track of us here is—maybe I'll defer to Mr. Esch, but there's something about Ellen that we probably need to know.
Well, it's not—it's—I don't—I mean, I didn't discuss this—Dan Esch County Clerk, I did not discuss this with her before the meeting, so I don't know if she wants to be saying anything, but she's okay. She'll—but she might not be here for the next meeting, and then after that, we'll see, so—
I—let me—well, let me say just a little bit. I talked to her yesterday about some things in her—she was in a great deal of pain, and I believe she's having that treated today. So, she had back surgery. So, HIPAA law be damned, you know? I'm not—I'm not bound by it, and I'm not her attorney, so—
Well, we do miss Ellen and wish her well, Kim.
Yeah, we wish her well.
Her flying fingers are tough to follow. The next recognition is a county employee retiring, Sharon Enmead, from the Douglas County Community Mental Health Center. I don't believe Sharon's able—or Sherry is able to join us this morning.
Motion to approve.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that.
Commissioner Kavanaugh's absent. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, and we will get the resolution to Sherry in recognizing her service with the county. The next one is a little more difficult one. A resolution honoring the life of Joe Stock, one of Douglas County's longest-serving employees. I knew Joe for a long time before I ever knew that his daughter was Mary Ann Borgeson, and it was—took quite a while to connect the pieces with me, because I'd known him for years before I found out he was of your connection.
Can I read it, or are you going to?
Please do, Paul. Mike, that would be great.
Whereas Mr. Joseph Stock, a native of Douglas County, Nebraska, began his career with Douglas County right out of high school in 1957 as an appraiser assistant for the Douglas County Assessors' Office, and whereas Mr. Stock-Joe originally thought he would only work for Douglas County part-time, but quickly realized his job was the perfect match, and began taking classes to become an appraiser. And whereas Mr. Stock-Joe, to all of us, held a number of positions in the Assessors' Office appraising both residential and commercial properties and supervising residential appraisers, and whereas Mr. Stock-Joe was remembered as a hard-working employee who was honest and regularly went above and beyond what was expected, and whereas one of Mr. Stock-Joe's three daughters, Douglas County Commissioner Mary Ann Borgeson, said her father was always proud to be fair, accurate, and professional when it came to his career, and whereas Mr. Stock-Joe retired from Douglas County in 2000 after 43 years of public service, at the time he was the longest-serving employee in Douglas County's history. And whereas after retirement, Mr. Stock-Joe spent a lot of time with family, including his wife Karen, his two other daughters Kathy and Caroline, and his many grandchildren and great-grandchildren. He also enjoyed fishing, relaxing at his getaway home near the Harlan County Reservoir in South Central Nebraska. And whereas Mr. Stock-Joe passed away on February 6, 2020, he was 80 years old. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby honors the life of Mr. Joseph Stock-Joe, one of our Douglas County's longest-serving employees, and recognizes his commitment to public service. We pass this resolution. I'd be proud to make the motion to pass it.
Second.
Thank you, and thank you for reading that.
Well, it's—you notice I just stared at the computer?
Yep.
If I could make a comment or two? Joe was—Mary Ann knows this. I'd be walking in the hallway after we had a Board of Equalization meeting, and I would hammer some of the Assessors' evaluations, as I've always done. Morrissey didn't like me either. Anyway, so I would hammer the evaluations, and Joe would go out of his way to come across and catch me and kind of block my way, and he said, "What are you doing?" And I said, "Well, I think I'm doing my job." And he says, "No, you're interfering with my job," and it was on it. And it was just really, he says, "Why are you doing that?" And I said, "Because I think maybe there's some correction"—there are no corrections. Anyway, he was a wonderful man, had a real classy way of correcting me, and I do need correction. He was one of my favorites in the Assessors' Office. I used to talk to him and ask his advice when he—when we—when I had questions that I didn't think would fire him up. But he was—a he was a consummate good employee. He was a classic government employee who cared about his job and what he did for the people. He served us extremely well, and is sorely missed. And, you know, he was just a class act. There's no other way to put it. He was a gentleman. He did his job well. He loved his family well, and raised a lot of really nice children, and especially the one that's on this county board, Mary Ann. So it is a great deal of sadness that we commemorate him, but well deserved, and Godspeed. He is in our memory.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mike, very much.
Nice comments. Appreciate that. Anybody else wishing to add anything to that? Okay, did—have we voted on this one?
There was a motion and a second.
Okay, could we please vote?
I vote yes. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We do have a resolution to share with Commissioner Borgeson. Did you—
I just wanted, if I could, if I can, thank everybody for all of their messages and cards and time that you spent with me during this. I didn't know my heart could hurt so bad, but I appreciate all of you. I really do. So thank you very much for recognizing.
Okay. Moving on. Citizens' comments. Would anybody wish to address this board on anything that is not on the agenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Five minutes is not very much, so it'll be kind of a fast bullet round here. I did go down testify last Thursday at the LV1167 on open meetings, so I'm glad to see that citizens' comments are still here right now, today. I don't know that they will be in the future. So I'll just make a passing comment on that. I did send an email to Dan with the same one to the city on my feelings over the last year and a half, two years or so, of how citizens have been treated, and why there were citizens down in Lincoln testifying. And I was a little surprised to see the city testifying, of course, against modifications of the open meetings. Didn't really surprise me. I didn't hear him say that we need to remove them, but anyway. Enough on that, because it's in my letter, and I think that'll speak for itself. The other thing is Black History Month. Some of the comments over the last couple of years, and some of the different venues that have been put on in regards to democracy, black history, racism, whatever they wanted to call it. Universities and town halls and things kind of left me with the impression that a lot of people in Omaha are being blamed or being called racist. In fact, that term has been used in the newspaper. So I would like to correct some things on that. I honor black history. I mentioned a couple of very famous people in the past that I'm very proud of. I might possibly have a little bit of that in my blood or Indian myself. But in order to help correct some of those statements and things, I'd like to present a copy of two movies that are very historical and very accurate, very highly relevant, having to do with the whole issue of slavery, which I'm sorry, it probably started after Noah's Ark was unloaded. From that time on, maybe before, somebody always had to be like a civil servant, or an indentured servant, or a slave, because not everybody could be the head of the family. Not everybody could be the king, et cetera. So it's not just America that started slavery. It was imported to America. But it did not the Indian tribes. Before anybody hit the continent, they had slaves. They had captives. They didn't treat their people right. So it's not just American history of slavery. Even the president has tried to clear that up. He's trying to lead our country into a better— But in order to help correct some of those statements and things, I'd like to present a copy of two movies that are very historical and very accurate, very highly in-depth, having to do with the whole issue of slavery, which, I'm sorry, it probably started after Noah's Ark was unloaded. From that time on, maybe before. Somebody always had to be like a civil servant, or an indentured servant, or a slave, because not everybody could be the head of the family. Not everybody could be the king, et cetera. So, it's not just America that started slavery. It was imported to America. But it did not the Indian tribes. Before anybody hit the continent, they had slaves, they had captives. They didn't treat their people right. So, it's not just American history of slavery. Even the president has tried to clear that up. He's trying to lead our country into a better, a better discussion of these issues. Nobody's really listening, I guess. The next point is on some of the things that have been said, both sides of the microphone, about refugees and illegals. That's another thing the president's trying to clarify. He's trying to solve some problems that Congress didn't solve. Fair treatment, basically, but also protection of the citizens, which is his ultimate duty. There's lots of good reasons for better screening of immigrants, of refugees. And there were various letters that went out from the president and from the Secretary of State about the changes to the refugee program. Yes, we all want to accept refugees, but on our terms, not on the terms of the United Nations, or some body overseas that decides what refugees are coming and where. That's all documented in here. But the spin that was put on this by local bodies was, only for the public good, public here, is that we are a welcoming city. It did not go into any of the details. But they are cutting the numbers, they are setting new rules, and they will not be sending people into the communities that are not ready for them. And that's all citizens have been asking for. The other thing is misunderstanding of cultures in relation to refugees and illegals. It's our culture, it's not the culture of other countries. We welcome them.
I'm going to ask if you can kind of wrap things up. You've had your five minutes now.
We welcome them, but there's a lot of facts that have not come out in this body. Like if I invite everybody to Dr. Mark Christians' lecture Thursday night, they'll be talking about some of those things, and what's true and what isn't true. The other thing, finally, I forgot to mention.
Larry, your five minutes are up, we need, we need to move on.
I just found it interesting that in October 15th, there was one sentence on rules sometime after October 15th of 2015, I think it was. All of a sudden, there was a big paragraph of rules that now appears under citizen comments. Some of that was because a line of citizens was here waiting to comment, and I guess people didn't like that. But often, I see lines of citizens.
Thank you, Larry. Anybody else wishing to address this group under citizen comments? If not, we will move to a public hearing concerning a liquor license. We will open a public hearing for Barrel &amp; Vine LLC, doing business as Barrel &amp; Vine, 1401 South 203rd Street. Manager application for James M. Perschel?
Perhal.
Perkel?
Yes. Perhal, let's see if I can.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Barb Perhal, I'm actually attorney for Barrel &amp; Vine. We're just here if you guys have any questions or comments, and I didn't know if there was anything specific you wanted to know from us. And this is Erin McKeever, who is also an owner.
Okay. Mostly, the purpose of this is to allow anybody from the public that may have some feelings about what you're doing and seeing nobody.
Do you provide gas money? Drive out.
I'll drive you.
Okay, good deal. I don't drink anymore, but anyway, it sounds like fun.
Okay, is there anybody else wishing to address this group under? Oh, we're losing a commissioner. Okay. I will close the public hearing, then. All right, questions or comments? Could we please vote?
I vote yes.
Wish you much success.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes six to zero.
There you go.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next is a public hearing. Item B, to establish a law regarding false alarms from electronic security systems that result in requests for emergency response. To establish a penalty, provide a method of enforcement. It's coming from Captain Hudson, I don't see him here, but I do see Chief Deputy Tom Wheeler. Tom, could you come join us, please? Well, this is the public hearing.
What is the hearing?
This is, this is the public hearing right now. So, if you have any.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tom Wheeler, Chief Deputy Sheriff.
Well, right out of the box, I'd like, I'd like to tell you how much I approve of this. I think it's a great idea. The, one of the items that I brought up last week was when we started in the city, one of the things that bothered me was a police officer came and told me about how he would walk into a bank nearby, and they had had 14 false alarms during the week, and a lot of tellers, and it was a busy bank. And he told me, he said, "One of these days," I just asked him how things are going, and he told me, he said, "It makes me a little nervous." He'd walk in, and everybody's real friendly, they smile and stuff, and one of these days, there could be a robbery in progress, and we don't, we're treating them like we're coming in for a cup of coffee or something. And so, it alarmed me, and I spoke to the Public Safety Director, and it was something that got on our radar, and we decided that we needed to be sure those alarms were real. And the only way to do it was really to enforce it, to make people improve their systems. And we fought with all the companies. They were very angry that the companies providing the service were going to be, their customers were going to be charged. People said, "We're not going to do it," and all that stuff, the usual sort of thing. And instead, what happened was, the systems were improved, people realized they can't walk out of the house and be carefree about what's going on, and the bank has to be more serious about what's taking place. So, this is not only a safety factor for the people who are involved, the citizens, but also our law enforcement officers, that when they go in, that it's truly an alarm that should be responded to with a lot of seriousness and could be something going on that has to be stopped. So, that's why I'm so much in favor of this, I'm so glad you're doing this. And you'll have some criticism, but as usual, you'll get over that sort of thing. That's kind of your job. So, I want to congratulate you for doing this, I think it's a good thing.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I agree that it's a good thing, and of course, Captain Hudson's been discussing this with us for a while, and this is obviously mirroring what the city of Omaha already has in place, so we're doing just what they're already doing. I did hear from one alarm company that had some concerns, and I said, "Contact Captain Hudson," you know, talking it out. I'm sorry, he's not here to find out if that conversation ever took place, but.
I'm not aware of that conversation. Captain Hudson happens to be out of town this week, but he did not relay that to me.
I'm good with what's going on here. Anybody other comments during the public hearing, Commissioner Borgerson?
Thanks, Tom. And so, how are we going to alert folks that this now, if it passes, you know, the second time, you're going to be charged $100?
Sure. The company that we're contracting with is Cry Wolf. They're the same company that the city of Omaha uses. If this measure is approved, there's a three-month onboarding process where they communicate with the customers, the alarm customers, and, or they communicate with the companies, who then communicate with the customers. They'll set up a website for Douglas County for the alarm ordinance that customers can go to and register.
And then, there's another $100 if they don't register and their alarm goes off.
There's some penalties if they register and we get an alarm call, I'm sorry, if they don't register and we get an alarm call there. There's some penalties involved if they don't.
And I apologize for not being here when Captain Hudson presented, but do you remember the numbers?
Sure. Are you talking about the number of alarms, or the, okay. So, we average about 2,000 alarm calls a year, and of those, about 99.4, 99.5 are false alarms. And many of those end up being repeat false alarms, where we go to the same location several times. So, it's our hope that this will, this will incentivize alarm companies and alarm owners to make sure that their alarms are in proper working order, that if they need new equipment, they're getting new equipment, and that when we go there, that it's a real alarm. As Commissioner Boyle pointed out, what we don't want is complacency. And if you go to the same location over and over, and 99.5% of the time, it's a false alarm, that's not a situation that's good for anybody.
And the only problem I have with this is that it seems like because there's, you know, again, a few who aren't being responsible or dinging everybody that has an alarm, so. But I understand the cost also that, for our deputies to go out and address those. Can you tell me how many are residential and how many are company?
I don't have that information with me today, but I can get it for you.
Thank you.
And I would disagree a little bit that we're dinging everybody. In my mind, what this does, because on our fire department, we went through something similar when we were getting too many false alarms. If you don't have something like this, you don't incentivize people to fix their system. Why should they bother fixing it? What do they care how many times the deputy comes out? If it doesn't matter to them unless there's some reason that they don't want the deputies coming out over and over again, so. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I understand what, exactly, we went through the same sort of thing at the city with a lot of complaints and from every side of it, because it hadn't been done. And one person came to the, to one of the meetings and spoke up, a woman who owned, had a home. And she came as a protester, and after listening to the testimony, she came up as a supporter. And what she said was that, she said, "I'm one of the offenders." And she said, "Our alarm goes off frequently, and we have police officers at our home." And she said, "I realize that if we have someone in the house who's holding someone hostage, and the police officer comes and we say everything's okay, he'll leave." And so, we want the alarm, if it ever happens, to be the real thing, so that the officer comes in and ready to protect us. And so, that, she said she was sold on that concept, that instead of coming in the door and saying, "Oh, everything's okay," which a hostage taker could very well say, "You tell them everything's okay," that kind of thing. We see those in television all the time. I mean, you tell them it's okay, and so, you know, she's trying to blink her eyes or something, and it doesn't work. You know, that's why it's so important. And it really isn't, it's for the safety of everybody involved, the officers and the citizens of the community. And of course, when they get an X, that this thing applies to them all the time, and now this just mirrors that, which is a safety. It really is a good idea. And I understand the reluctance and the complaints, but it's one of those things that has to be licensed and encouraged.
Agreed. Would anybody else like to address this issue during the public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Do we have to declare an emergency to do this? We're corresponding with Dan a little bit first.
Dan Ash County Clerk, I'll refer to Theresa, I do know, but I probably better come from her instead of me.
Give us some guidance.
Theresa here at County Attorney's Office. So, before you adopt, normally, you have to do a three, a three reading, but this board can waive the three reading if three fours of the board, and there'll be six of you, so it's going to have to be unanimous. But if all six of you vote to waive the, the reading, the three readings, then you could move forward with adoption.
Mr. Chair? I think, I think what we ought to do, particularly since Larry is here, we should not declare an emergency, and go ahead and have our three hearings. Larry, you're helping us do the job the right way, okay? All right, so let's just do it without waiving the hearings, that's what I think.
So, this is, would this qualify as the first reading, the second reading?
So, we've had one, this would be two. And so, if I may, this board had considered an ordinance last summer and did waive the three readings and moved forward adoption. I think that the board certainly could do that today. If, Dan, I'll have to jump in here, but we've, the county clerk, by statute, provides notice to the other jurisdictions. And if the other jurisdictions have an ordinance that covers an area, then we would need to amend it, but it's my, the ordinance here before you today to draw back some of that area where it's going to be enforced. But it's my understanding that no jurisdiction has said that they've got an ordinance, so we don't need to amend. So, this body could go ahead and waive the three readings, and go ahead and then make a motion to adopt and move forward with adoption today.
I hear one commissioner reluctant to do that, which means we aren't going to get the six votes.
We do.
So, okay, two commissioners, so we just had our second reading.
All right, very well.
And we'll have this on the agenda next week for, two weeks, for the third reading and consideration of passage.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Captain.
Thank you. All right, Budget Report, Pete, Jerry, Mike, anything?
Has submitted. We have money in the bank, don't we, Joe?
So, life is good. All right. We have the minutes for the February 7th Health and Human Services Committee meeting. Yes?
We have a criminal justice meeting after this meeting. And it's going to be out at 156th and Maple. And it's an opportunity to see what's going on out there. The 911 Center is really beautiful, the architects did a great job, and Mr. Leahy was really good at taking care of things. Anyway, we're going to have a meeting out there, and we're going to be talking about emergency management. We're going to talk about the siren system, alternatives to the siren system, and also go into 911 and some of the funding. So, it's an important meeting, I hope it doesn't catch you all off guard going driving out there, but I've gassed the car and I'm ready to go.
And that's scheduled for 2:00?
Yes, 2:00.
At 156th and Maple.
Right. And everyone's invited, it's a public meeting.
Thank you. Legislation, is there anything that we need to be acting on, or?
Yeah. Commissioners, Marco Sammartine, Douglas County Labor and Legislative. So, Commissioner Duda and I had a conversation earlier this morning and earlier this week. There is a bill that the Clerk's Office has, is passing out. It's LB 1192, 1192. It's been introduced by Senator Lenihan. And this bill was brought to our attention from the County Assessors' Office, and I've had conversation with, like I said, with Chair Duda and with Sean Kelly, et cetera. Essentially, this bill, what it's proposing is that it will cap, in a nutshell, it will cap the homestead reimbursement from the state at $100 million in a, in a calendar year. When we were doing some analysis, or the Assessors' Office was doing an analysis, we are, essentially, the state is right up against that cap. If we were to have some more residential value increases, you know, through 2020, 2021, 2022, we could be, without a doubt, the estimate is that we could be pushing right up against that $100 million cap. And therefore, the way that the bill is written, it's a very short bill. I hope you all, yeah, you all do have a copy. The way that it's written is that the tax commissioner will essentially pro-rata, you know, proportionally reduce the amount reimbursed to counties. And so, you know, we, we would, so we have the potential to have a loss in revenue. So, I'm bringing this bill forward for the board to consider being on record in opposition. The test, the, the hearing is on Thursday of this week. And, yeah, if you have any other questions for me. The bill has not been prioritized, but again, it's, it is up for hearing this week.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgerson.
I appreciate the work Senator Lenihan does on many different areas down there, but this particular one, I just think that's wrong. It's not a good time to do this. You know, we, we are going to be having, by the year 2035, 65-year and older population is going to supersede our 18-year-olds. And I'm not saying everybody's going to be going on homestead exemption, but I'm saying we're going to have an increase in our elderly population as we have seen over the course of time. And this helps our seniors stay in their homes, which we want our seniors to stay in their homes. And even if there has to be services wrapped around them, we want that. Not only for the quality of their life, but it's actually, it does save money. And it saves, again, their quality of life to be able to stay in their home. If they don't have this homestead exemption, I think we're going to see a lot of seniors that aren't able to do that. And so, I think we, we need to oppose this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
Mary Ann hit the nail on the head. This, this sort of legislation would be a tremendous burden for the elderly and would push them onto social services, which we have to fund too, you know? So, the other thing is that it is really a very hard-hearted, you know, singling out the elderly. It's easy, because I doubt none of them will be down there to testify. I'm going to go down. But I think, you know, it is, it's really almost sinful. It's a sin to do this. These folks, you know, as she pointed out, there's going to be a growing group of elderly. They don't do this, this is checked very thoroughly by the Assessors' Office, and I thank them for bringing this to our attention. It is, it's heartless, and it is a bad piece of legislation. I really like Senator Lenihan, she's very, very open and very able to understand these issues, but this is one that we just don't agree on. And I agree with Commissioner Borgerson on this issue, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes.
Yes. Does, excuse me, does anyone know the reasoning Senator Linehan brought this forward?
Save state money.
That's what I thought. I see this as another attempt to punish Omaha, to punish poor people, to punish old people. This is just outright wrong. And we see our government attempting to do that in so many ways. In so many ways, I, I don't want to enumerate them here because I'll be here until 2:00. Thank you.
I think we should amend this to tax newspapers.
Okay. Yeah, and just to clarify, you know, for the commissioners, so, you know, the, the individuals, they'll be, they'll still be eligible, it's just that, that revenue from the state, you know, will, will not be coming to the county. So we would have to, you know, essentially eat that, that cost or, you know, figure out that, you know, so. That's the.
All right.
That's the additional detail on it.
All right. Commissioner Borgeson.
Well, I'm glad you said that because that even exemplifies the reason to oppose this, and that is because it's a shift. And we, again, have not only issues, again, with the unfunded mandates that come down, but we have seen over the course of time, and we can sit here and give you example after example after example of the shifts that have occurred at the state level to the local county level, for us to have to pick those up, our taxpayers have to pick those up. It's the taxpayers' dollars that are paying for this. So again, that, that is just another reason to oppose it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft.
I'm going to not talk.
Okay. Well, well, I'm reluctant to wade into this because I am so fond of Senator Linehan and I like working with her. And, I mean, she has sat down with us for a couple hours to, you know, understand county issues, and I so appreciate that and respect it. But I, this really does fly in the face of what we're trying to do. So reluctantly, I will support. Yeah, yeah. Especially if you're willing to go down and testify, it's important to really have the board behind you. All right, do we have a motion then to? Go right ahead, Larry. First, I will make sure, we have the motion and a second. Borgeson and Kraft, okay, Larry?
I'm reluctant to oppose LB 1192.
This is why citizen comments are extremely important. Because in that short five minutes, three minutes, and sometimes cut down to a minute and a half as they did on the weapons bill, most citizens don't hear this. And it smacks them in the face when it happens. We require information from you people that these things are going on. Because most people don't travel down there to listen. It's not in the newspaper until it's done. If you don't make it down here today, you might not be able to comment on today's issues next week. It's too late. So I suggested to the legislature that you need to have a little bit more flexibility in the rules. And by the way, I want to comment that it's a lot more comfortable down there when the gentleman sitting over here or back in the back at the door has a red coat on. He's the sergeant of arms. It's a lot more comfortable to be down there. Yes, they have a highway patrol, but I may not be able to afford it. I don't get property exemption right now because I make a little bit too much money every year. But it's just going to be a matter of another year or two before I might need to rely on exemption. So I have to sell down money, assets in order to qualify. That's not fair either. So the main point of what I'm trying to get at is who writes these laws? If you don't write it yourself, who do you hire or who do you accept that proposed legislation You want to be careful of that because maybe they have a different agenda than you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any other comments regarding LB 1192?
Paul Bellinger, 10215 West Center Road, Omaha, Nebraska. I talked to Senator McCollister about this issue for probably a couple of hours, and it seems like the concern is the 501(c)(3)'s that are dumping all that onto the regular taxpayer, that this is, this is the reason why they're, they're coming up with this, that the 501(c)(3)'s are saying, well, if, if our elderly get the tax break, if they get the exemption, well, then why shouldn't a tax-exempt, tax-free municipal corporation be able to get that same tax exemption equal, equal to the old person in our community? 501(c)(3) tax-free, so we take all of that and we dump it back onto the taxpayers of our county. And what they're, what he told me that they were trying to do was to eliminate this program so that they could eliminate the cost of the 501(c)(3)'s. Diana Bodyotto replacing all the 501(c)(3) value back onto the taxpaying public. That if they eliminated this, they eliminate that argument of, well, you give him an exemption and he's an old guy. Well, here's a 501(c) that has, 501(c)(3) that has a federally authorized exemption or however you want to do it, whatever you want to call it, you eliminate one exemption, you can eliminate the other and bring down the overall tax base for everybody. That was my understanding from John McCollister. Maybe I'm wrong, but he told me, he told me pretty straight on that, you know, he didn't like this program. John wasn't for this program. He was for supporting the 501(c)(3)'s in our community and going forward like that. I mean, 501(c)(3)'s do a lot of good in our community. But as, as a taxpayer, I don't think that all of the value from CHI should be dumped onto my property at 10215 West Center Road for me to pick up the charitable value of that corporation, and then they get to spend willy-nilly. So I'm thinking that that's what he told me. I, I love Senator McCollister. I love all those people down there. You guys deal with them every day. I go down there about once a week and, and maybe if the car will get there, maybe if I have enough insurance money left over from my helicopter pilot that's, you know, done to a couple of $20 million aircrafts into our county, you know? I mean, it's, it's just basic common sense. I mean, the normal taxpayer cannot continue to pick up a hospital value and have it spread out. I mean, that's what Diana Bodyotto does. She takes the value of Methodist Hospital. She takes the value of a portion of the Union Pacific Siding, all of those, and she distributes to the taxpayer and working people of our county. And that's what they're trying to offset here because people like Larry go down there and they scream and holler about how high their taxes are, jump up and down, and then we spend three days down there overnight sessions about the value of our property either going up because of the displaced value, the 501(c)(3) value being distributed through our whole community. And I, I'm a 501(c)(3) guy. I worked for a 501(c)(3) for many, many years. Our juvenile justice system is going to be a 501(c)(3). It just doesn't seem to me, if I go out and, and, and I approach Diana Bodyotto with my federally approved 501(c)(3) application for wayward homeless Blue Jays in my backyard, I mean, come on. That's what we're talking about as a taxpayer. We, we're tired of paying for a parking lot in a CHI back room somewhere out on Dodge Street that really has no business being there. We need our 501(c)(3)'s to step up and actually pay the cost it costs the regular taxpayer to live in the city of Omaha, in any of our counties, in the borders of our states. Look, if you can't pay the tax that your property is taxed for, it, it's, it's no consolation to give it over to a taxpaying, working public. Eventually, you're going to have Larry up here paying all of the taxes. Thank you for listening to me today. This is the circle of greatness. Please don't stop the circle of greatness. Marianne, heartfelt loss for you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Paul. Appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to comment regarding LB 1192? The motion is that we go on record in opposition. If there are no further questions or comments, could we please vote?
Motion passes six to zero, and Mr. Chair will, will make sure that we get Marcos the resolution as soon as we can so we can pass that along to Senator Linehan's office if he wants to, or you guys want him to.
Very good, so that they have it before Thursday. Very good, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Boyle.
I have a bill I'd like to bring forward. I think we ought to be supportive of it. It's LB 627, which is the bill that prohibits discrimination based upon sexual orientation and gender, gender identity. And this bill is, as you know, is supported by, not that I'm doing this for that reason, but supported by the Chamber of Commerce, which is kind of unusual, to have them step out on this kind of an issue. But this is something that, when the city considered it, I was, I testified in favor of it, and I'm really glad they testified. I also brought this before the county board and was told to wait until the state does something. So anyway, I, I think we ought to be supportive. I've contacted Senator Panzine Brooks and told her that I'm supportive and let me know what I can do. And I, the reason that I gave, I'll, I'll tell you here very briefly. I've represented gay men who've been discriminated against, and in Nebraska, there's no recourse, and I told them that from the outset. One young man was being, worked at a place, he had gotten special training in, he was working at a place in a highly skilled job. And he was, there was a lot of horseplay, which meant that men were shoving him and touching him and so forth. It was just a real strange situation where the horseplay was totally out of control and, and getting very abusive, and it was all men. And in any event, he, he is homosexual. And he came and met with me, his, his mother actually referred him to me. And he came and had a physician with him, and we sat and we talked over coffee. And I, I told him that I knew the owner of the business and I, that he would never, he's a very wealthy person, he would never, and has no idea this is going on, he'd never support this. He would bring it to a halt. And he said, oh, please don't do that, it'll get worse, though, you know? And I said, well, I don't know what other recourse there is. So in any event, I tried to counsel him and say that we probably needed to do this to get this to stop, I didn't see any other way to do it, and he was very reluctant, didn't want it done. And three weeks later, he hanged himself. He killed himself. He took his own life, committed suicide over this, what was bothering him. And I have never forgotten that. I just, I wish that I could have done something for him. This is a serious issue. It is life and death. There are people who are trying to hide their, and they're very uncomfortable because of whatever reason. And there are young people who are taking their lives and there are people who've been discriminated against. I represented a young man who worked for a big national company, and it was very strange, the circumstances. He came to work a couple hours early every day, very early, and began, he was a terrific employee. And his, his dog died, and he was very upset about the dog. And when he'd find himself growing tearful while he was working, and pretty soon he started taking some pretty bad ribs from his fellow employees. And before it was over, they were really treating him very badly and accusing him of, of being gay, which he was. And so the business responded by firing him. He was disruptive to the rest of the employees. And so because of his sexual orientation, he was fired. And he lived in Iowa, and I'm not allowed to practice law in Iowa, but I got him lined up with someone. But it was, it was not a good, not a good, not a good ending either. So here's another person. And there were others. I won't go into details, but the one that really sticks with me is the one who took his life. And I, I don't know what I could have done to stop it, but I think about it often. So we need to stand up for what's right. And this, this is right. People who are in this, in this situation, it's a choi, it's not a choice. I hear that from people, sometimes it's not. People who have other sexual orientations and gender identities need to be protected. They are our brothers and sisters.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kraft.
I've got my voice back, thank goodness. And you were spot on. And when I was an employer, I had employees who would not accept people of the LGBT. And, and I did what I could to counsel them because I had gay employees and they didn't realize they were gay. When I say gay, the, the other employee didn't realize it. And they were very fine employees, and to exclude somebody who is extremely competent from doing their job is causing part of the brain drain. And as a society, five years ago, this bill probably would never have passed. But people are becoming more acceptable to these changes, and that is a good thing. We're not the only country that sees this. And I'm thinking back to a movie of the 1970s starring Dustin Hoffman as a various positions, one as a Native American riding his horse backward. I don't remember the name of the movie. You, you remember it? Little Big Man, you know? They addressed some of these issues back then. So it's not a new issue. And, and I support you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I forgot about the character in that movie. Other comments? Commissioner Borgeson.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh. Okay.
I, I just want to thank Commissioner Boyle for bringing this forward. One of the things, and I can go back to when I was this high and we were taught to treat everyone equal and love everyone the same, regardless of what their gender, race, religion, whatever. I see far too much of people, again, trying to divide folks that are different than us. And this obviously isn't going to solve everything, but it's a step in the right direction for us to say, you are welcome here and you are protected here, and so I will support this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? We have a motion and a second, I believe.
All right, give us one moment, please.
Tell you Ellen's flying fingers I have to replace.
I think Ellen's got something to do with it.
So it was a, support LB 627? And who was the, made the motion of?
Did you make the motion? I second it.
Okay, there you go.
In our defense, it's an ad hoc topic, so, yeah. We are, we are ready to vote.
All right.
We're not.
Motion passes six to zero.
We didn't vote.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry. Sorry, the last, the last vote was.
Is there any way Ellen can do this remotely?
Yeah. Now, now we're, now the vote is active.
Do tell Ellen how much we miss her.
Okay, well, the motion did pass six to zero.
Thank you. A nice job, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other legislation? Anything else for the good of the cause? We have no need that I am aware of for executive session, and life, life is good. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All those in favor can signify by leaving, those opposed can stay. We stand adjourned. Thank you all for a nice meeting. His, his meeting is at 2:00 at, at 156th and Maple.
And I won't be there, I'm flying over town to Atlanta.
Oh, okay. Appreciate you being up there. Well, I know you had to change your schedule for that, and I thank you for doing so. Well, I know you had to change your schedule for that and I thank you for doing so.